Good afternoon, everyone. Please can I welcome everyone to this reconvened meeting of Cabinet on 22nd of September 2022 from the Walton Suite, Winchester Guildhall. The meeting was adjourned from the 14th of September. The time is 2pm. My name is councillor Martin Todd, chairperson of the Cabinet and leader of the council. I have a few housekeeping points to make before we begin. Firstly, please can I advise that the open parts of the meeting are being audio recorded and livestreamed from the council's website. In addition, a video recording of the meeting is being made and will be publicly available shortly afterwards. Please can I remind all participants to speak clearly and remember to use your microphone. In addition, please speak directly into the microphone and do not turn away when speaking. This will ensure your comments are picked up for the audio and video recording as well as improving the audibility in the room. Please can everyone ensure that mobile phones and other electronic devices are on silent or switched off entirely. In the unlikely event that it is necessary to evacuate the building, the fire alarm will sound. Please follow any instruction given to you by staff or fire marshals. All fire exits are marked by green exit signs. Please proceed quickly and calmly to the assembly point, which is in Abbey Gardens, and do not use the lift. Can I welcome any members of the public and visiting councillors to the meeting this morning, this afternoon? When we get to the relevant part of the agenda, if you'd like to come forward to the empty desk in front of you, the microphone is activated by pressing the large button on the base. And as you know, you will have a limited period, three minutes, to make your contribution. A timer will appear on the screen to show the time remaining. Turning to the agenda, the first item on the agenda is apologies for absence. I believe we have no apologies for absence. The second item is membership of Cabinet bodies. So I would like to announce the appointment of councillor Kathleen Becker to Cabinet as the Cabinet Member for Inclusion and Engagement. This is a vitally important role, designed to ensure that the council engages more closely with the public and that all voices are heard as we shape the council's work. As a consequence of councillor Becker, would you like to come forward councillor Becker and join the Cabinet? Thank you very much, congratulations. As a consequence of this change, I'm proposing to appoint councillor Becker as the Chair of the Members Equality, Diversity and Inclusion Forum. And because councillor Becker is now in Cabinet, we need to appoint a new Member Champion for Equality, Diversity and Inclusion, and I propose to appoint councillor Angela Clear to that role. While the appointment to Cabinet is a matter for me as leader, Cabinet, do you agree with the appointment of councillor Clear as Member Champion?
We do.
Thank you. A second, possibly third, quick announcement. I know there is a lot of interest in ensuring that as a city with a long and proud royal history, we ensure a strong programme for the upcoming coronation. So I wanted to make clear that councillor Thompson will be taking responsibility for this as part of the business and culture portfolio. Thank you very much indeed for taking that on, councillor Thompson. The next item of business is disclosure of interests. I need to make the normal declaration of a personal and non-bucunary interest as a member of the county council, where there are some overlaps on some of the issues in front of us.
And I would like to do the same, please.
Thank you very much indeed. Do we have any other declarations of interest relating to this meeting? Do not, thank you. The next item is to note any requests from councillors to make representations on an agenda item. And I have a request to speak on items six, eight and 10, I believe, from councillor Wallace, and on eight, nine and 10 from councillor Horrell. I will come to you at that point in the meeting.
Chair, just to, councillor Wallace has advised this morning that he doesn't wish to speak on item 10 anymore, so it's just items six and eight.
Thank you very much indeed for that clarification. So just items six and eight. Thank you for the clarification. The next item on the agenda is public participation. We have no members of the public who have registered to speak on any items today, so we will not be having any public participation. The next item of agenda is the minutes of the previous meeting held on the 19th of July. And councillor Wallace, I believe you wish to speak on that particular point.
Thank you, Chair. Right, just a quick one. There was just a reminder that the last meeting Cabinet agreed to confirm, two things, to confirm whether the intention remained for garden waste collection scheme to be controlled, and secondly, to provide data in support of the statement that the new Eastern Park and Ride, the Voltech site, reduces traffic into the city and supports the council's carbon neutrality pledges. I haven't seen any responses on either of those yet.
Thank you. Thank you very much indeed for that point, councillor Wallace. The purpose of this agenda item is normally just approval of the minutes and corrections for accuracy, and there isn't a discussion on any questions or matters arising from them. So before addressing that particular point, are there any other questions or comments on the accuracy of the minutes? Can we approve the minutes as a correct record of the previous meeting? Thank you. Normally, we wouldn't take questions at this particular point. However, I recognise you may not have known this, so on this occasion, I'm happy to ask colleagues to provide a clarification. In future, though, if you have a similar question, please feel free to contact me directly and I will come back to you with answers to your particular questions. However, in this particular case, or direct them to the relevant Cabinet member. You had two questions in this case. Councillor Lerni, we have a question on garden waste and we have a question on the state of the Voltech car park. Could you take us through answers to both of them?
Thank you, Leader. It was confirmed at the last meeting that the garden waste subscription charge has been set on the basis of covering scheme costs, subject, of course, to take-up, which was obviously unknown at the start of the scheme. 21,600 households have subscribed this year and the income generated has been sufficient to cover the contract costs. The current charge will not, however, be sufficient to cover 2023/24 operating costs based on the latest inflation assumptions. However, given the current inflation situation, the charge will have to be subject to review as part of our overall review of council finances. Turning to Voltech, we do have a performance indicator which assesses what proportion of our parking is in each of the three car park zones, which is reported and updated quarterly. The new Park and Ride was opened in mid-March 2022, so data from it was included in the quarter one response, which showed a 5.3% reduction in central car parking compared to the previous year's comparative quarter. However, of course, there may be other factors that have had an impact, such as Covid, weather and the local economy. So we will continue to monitor this metric and clearly we are committed to trying to reduce parking in the town centre, and this is part of all of our relevant policies. Oh, the final bit was around the solar panels. So we are awaiting metrics on the amount of zero-carbon energy generated by the solar panels on the top of Voltech, and we will update you with that as and when those figures become available. Of course, Voltech has been described as a solar park with a car park underneath, so I think that's another way of looking at it.
Thank you councillor Lerni. The next item on the agenda is the leader and Cabinet member announcements. I have a brief announcement that I want to make. Colleagues, I said a few words in the earlier part of the meeting that we adjourned, before we adjourned, in memory of the late Queen. At this meeting, I wanted to thank the officer team who worked so hard alongside colleagues at the cathedral and the county council to help ensure that our city was able to mark the loss of Her Majesty and the accession of our new King in such an appropriate way. Aside from the support for the proclamation on Sunday, September 11, which I know included one officer getting up early to sew new black covers for our maces, council officers also ensured that the Guildhall was open every day for people to sign the city council's book of condolences, and also provided the necessary support for the mayor, chief executive and other councillors to participate in other events in the city. At the same time as all this work was being done, officers who were not involved in the commemorations worked really hard to ensure that the inevitable rescheduling of council business because of the period of official mourning would not hold up our work after the period of mourning came to an end, and ensured that our services continued to be delivered and that we were ready to keep moving ahead with our agenda at the end of the period of mourning. So I'm very grateful, and I know I speak on behalf of all of Cabinet in saying this, both for the colleagues that ensured that the city marked the loss of Her Majesty and the accession of a new King in an appropriate way, and also the colleagues who put so much work into ensuring that all the other work of the council continued ongoing. Councillor Ferguson, I believe you also have an announcement.
I do, thank you, Leader. I'm pleased to announce that today we are launching a cost of living intervention, which is focused on supporting households in the Winchester district who are struggling with the rising cost of living. This intervention is in addition to the support being provided by central government and takes into account our local understanding of the impact of the crisis on our residents. The Liberal Democrat administration recognises that the rising cost of living is having a huge impact on many of our residents' lives. Costs are rising at such a pace, including food, fuel and energy costs, that income and benefit levels are unable to keep up. And many people are very worried they may not be able to make ends meet as we move into the winter. This is why we're launching this cost of living intervention today, to provide additional support where it's most needed. I'm pleased to announce that we are putting in place a £200,000 package of measures to provide help and support to those who need it most. These measures include a cost of living emergency grant fund that will be used to provide additional support to partner organisations who can provide advice and practical support to residents. This includes help to reduce and manage energy bills, help to access benefits and grants, help to access food and other types of emergency support. We're also going to be calling a local cost of living summit to bring together partner organisations from across the Winchester district to discuss how we can best work together to coordinate and maximise our efforts and their impact. This will include understanding the potential need to provide a network of warm and safe spaces this winter. We're also setting up a dedicated webpage to help people find the information they need quickly and easily, with direct links to available support. We're also ensuring that where appropriate, the council's own services are focused on offering the targeted support our residents need. We will also be writing to central government to call on them to provide additional support for those most severely affected locally. We're committed to providing our residents with the support they need and have set out five clear objectives for this cost of living intervention. We're helping our residents access support quickly and easily. We're offering that extra support to our most vulnerable residents. We're helping residents to cut their carbon and reduce their energy bills. We're making it easy for residents to find and access relevant information. And importantly, we're working with our partners to coordinate our efforts and maximise our joint impact. Winchester City Council has a strong track record of providing support when people need us most. The cost of living intervention I'm announcing today is part of that ongoing work the council is doing to support our residents and communities, and builds on the support we provided to our communities throughout the Covid pandemic, and more recently in providing asylum and sanctuary to people of thought safety and a home in our district. We believe the cost of living intervention will help and support our residents through the current cost of living crisis, and help our communities come through what for many will be a very difficult period indeed. Thank you, Leader.
Thank you very much indeed councillor Ferguson. Councillor Thompson, you have a couple of announcements.
Yes, thank you, Leader. The first is I'm absolutely delighted to announce that Winchester has been named one of the best cities in the UK for a city break by Which magazine. The Consumer Magazine asked more than 3,600 people to rate over 50 destinations across the UK against several categories. Winchester scored a high of 78%, with our accommodation and cultural offering gaining four out of five stars. We also picked the overall winner to the post for value for money, which, given the current rise in living costs, is a very real positive. Of course, a strong visitor economy remains crucial to the overall economic wellbeing of the district, and these findings, along with our current data, underpin this. Winchester has seen an increase in tourist interest with increased website activity on the Visit Winchester website. Our retail businesses are also reporting a 20% rise in footfall between January and June of this year. And our footfall here in the High Street in the city for August shows an increase of 24% up on the previous month of July, so there is much to be positive about. Going forward, I will be looking to see how we can increase this footfall, both here in Winchester and in our market towns. And I will be bringing a paper to the next meeting of the Business Housing Policy Committee, setting out the findings following our review of our street markets. And I look forward to discussing what can be done to improve our offer and drive that footfall upwards. My second announcement is about an event that I was very pleased to attend. I attended along with the mayor and the deputy leader councillor Ferguson, the Paralympic Personal Events, Best Events, which took place at the Winchester Sport and Leisure Centre and the University of Winchester's athletics track on the 25th of August. The event, which was held in partnership with Everyone Active, the University of Winchester and Winchester Go LD, marked its 10th anniversary and involved a full day of activities for children and adults with learning and physical disabilities. Over 150 people took part in the day's activities, and participants were able to try out a huge variety of sports, from squash, swimming and football, to rugby and running and lots of other activities. It was a truly fantastic sight to see so many people taking the opportunity to have a go, whatever their ability, at such a wide variety of sports, both indoor and outdoors. The smiling faces and enthusiasm shown at the presentation ceremony at the day's end proved that it was thoroughly enjoyed by all. This event was such a great example of working in partnership. The location was amazing and it was very humbling to be part of such an inclusive and enjoyable event. I would like to thank our partners, Everyone Active, the University of Winchester and Winchester Go LD, and of course, not forgetting our WCC officers for providing the spectacular venue and for being part of the organisation of such an amazing event. Thank you, Leader.
Thank you very much indeed councillor Thompson. Are there any other announcements? So, on to the next agenda item, which is the Community Infrastructure Levy, Community and Winchester City Council Projects Approval, CAB336. Councillor Porter, would you like to introduce this paper?
Thank you. And Corinne Phillips has just joined the table as the author of the report with me. This paper has the specific purpose to give agreement to new projects, oh, it's got a bit of feedback here, to give new projects recommended to the panel after the applications were made in the spring of this year to the city council, and those were agreed, subject to this agreement today, by a board which has specifically brought up for that purpose. The paper really agrees projects for the Community Projects Fund, which is a fund which has a limited amount of money assigned to it every year, and the applicants make their application in the spring of the year to be agreed in the autumn of the same year. I think it shows with these projects from the rural parishes that it's possible to part-fund them by the parishes, part-fund it from SIL, and they use the opportunity to build up projects in our growing communities to improve the infrastructure in those communities, which contributes to living well in those communities. It includes, and I won't go through the detail of them, because Corinne may well do that, but it includes new accessible footpaths, pump tracks and gyms, allotments and also a pavilion and the associated infrastructure around it. As a result of the inflation challenges we're seeing, this fund is actually being increased for next year to £300,000, including the unallocated sum of £23,548 that was unspent in this year. Just to say that the paper does acknowledge formally the difficulties that inflation is bringing to budgeted works, and I think that will be a subject of some conversations and papers in the future. This paper isn't just about parishes, it's also about recommending SIL funds, Community Infrastructure Levy funds, for the King George V Recreation Ground of a value of £150,000, and also for £800,000 for the increased pavilion costs at King's George V. In the paper, in items five and six, I think it's five and six, it refers to the town forum which would have been held originally on the 14th of September. In fact, it's being held tonight. So those two items are subject to the agreement of the town forum, to their participation in the funding, which is going to take place this evening. But if we can make an attempt at agreeing those to May for the district SIL, that would be extremely helpful. You might like to ask Corinne any questions about the paper. The detail of all those projects are from page 29 to 55. It includes the current applicants and then the previous applicants as well, so you can see a full range of the programme that this contributes to. Have any other questions? Corinne, I'm sure could answer them.
Thank you very much indeed councillor Porter. The next part of the meeting is for the two councillors, visiting councillors who wish to say something or ask questions to come forward. Councillor Wallace, would you like to come forward and ask your question?
Thank you. Firstly, I'd like to say it's great to see some exciting projects receiving SIL funding that I'm sure will benefit the local communities, and I look forward to seeing many more. Tackling the climate emergency and creating a greener district is one of the commitments that this council has made. All SIL projects are assessed against this commitment. However, today, this assessment appears to have been purely qualitative. That is to say, applicants are evaluated on a wordy description of how the projects will contribute towards the priorities of the council plan. Going forward, obviously, the council set targets for reducing greenhouse gas emissions across the district. In order to achieve these commitments, the council needs to start quantifying the impact that all projects, including these SIL projects, have on greenhouse gas emissions. To that end, what steps are the Cabinet making to ensure that future SIL applications quantify their greenhouse gas?
Thank you very much indeed. I think we might as well tackle that question now. Do you have a response councillor Porter?
Yeah, I think we were hoping to bring a new policy paper about infrastructure levy to this period now, but it is really predicated on the new rules that are being set by government, which is changing Community Infrastructure Levy to Infrastructure Levy. And so we have delayed that for a short while because it's double the work to write two policy papers. But we are expecting to do that at any moment, and it's literally the next thing on the worklist, the moment the government gives clear steer on this. So that's my part of it. Councillor Lerni might like to make a comment as well. But certainly, it is very much, we're mindful of the qualitative issue at the moment. Quantitatively, I think I'll pass over to councillor Lerni.
Yes, I think it's, I think one of the things we are keen to do is to consider the impact on the climate emergency in everything we do, but without making it too onerous and creating systems which effectively stop people applying. One of the things we're very keen to move forward with is that 15, 20-minute city concept about having as many facilities as possible close to where people live. And I think these kind of community projects and providing those kind of facilities in those rural areas is very important. So I think we fully accept councillor Wallace's point about the need to be a bit more academically rigorous in areas about this, but at the same time, we do have to be careful about creating barriers which prevent us from achieving our overall goals. And SIL is, at the end of the day, about helping local communities benefit from building in their area rather than having them suffer from effectively more demand on local services and infrastructure. And I think it's important that we bear the overall purpose in mind as well as broader council policy.
Councillor Lerni, can you clarify it for me? There was also a discussion at the moment about the county council's decision-making tools.
Yes, that's correct. We are having a look at that, but I think the question is, who would we be requiring to do the work around that? Are we going to require applicants to do that, for example, and use those tools in advance, or will we have to find extra resource to do so? So those are all factors which we need to take into account. But yes, we are considering those decision-making tools.
Well, thank you very much indeed. And councillor Horrell, your questions or comments?
Chair, thank you for allowing me to address Cabinet this afternoon. But before I begin, I'd like to endorse your words councillor Todd, regarding the officers and the efforts that they made around the death of Her Majesty. So on behalf of all councillors, in addition to Cabinet, thank you to all of you for that wonderful effort over many days, with information being hard to gain at various times. So thank you. I have a number of questions, Chair, about the paper before us today, and a couple of suggestions which I hope you might consider. SIL can be a black hole for some of us, given the informal nature of the decision-making process, but obviously today, there is a key decision to be made. I know all councillors would welcome the opportunity for input to the strategic review detailed in section 11.2 of the paper today, which I understand you are about to undertake. I hope you feel that this would be of value for the whole council community. SIL gives us an opportunity for the entire district to benefit and the broader inclusive discussion would be well received. Councillor Porter has also mentioned the timing of government reforms, and so I question the timing of the current review and our better understanding of what the planning reforms are likely to be, given there is still lack of clarity. Is it worth holding off momentarily until this is understood? We could do a lot of the preparatory work, but maybe await further data from government before we actually amend a policy and maybe have to make further additions once we know that information. and maybe have to make further additions once we know that information. Without a doubt, access to the SIL funding is popular across the district, and I really welcome the recommendation to have £300,000 available for 2023/24. My question is, is that sufficient, given the number of projects that submit proposals to you? Could we not squeeze the total pot a little more and add a further few community projects to the decision process? In fact, I would be encouraging us not to hold a surplus, no matter how small, and I know we're rolling it forward, but to spend absolutely up to the limit wherever we can. And finally, Chair, I question the level of district SIL, the £1.25 million being offered to the KGV project. But I will raise this point during the next item on the agenda. But I just flag the fact that it is a considerable sum to that particular activity. Thank you, Chair.
Well, thank you very much indeed, councillor Horrell, for those questions. And as you say, we will have a chance to scrutinise the questions relating to KGV in full on the next agenda item. But councillor Porter, would you like to respond to those questions, please?
Yes, Asha, I'd just like to say that the sum that has been outstanding at the end of the year, the £23,000, basically all the applications are looked at, and if they're relevant and are in agreement with our criteria, then they're very seriously considered. There's actually a number received that are not necessarily relevant to our criteria. However, on the terms of the new policy, I'm just going to refer to Dornady, our strategic director, because we have talked about this in a great deal of detail, and I'm sure she'll be able to answer it better than I can.
Thank you. You're right, and I think councillor Porter referred to it in her introduction, that we are at risk of writing the policy twice if we wait for the... Rather, if we don't wait for the government advice. Equally, we could be here this time next year with similar criteria if we haven't looked at it quickly enough. So we are expecting further consultation on the infrastructure levy. If that doesn't come forwards in the next few months, we will reconsider our timing and our position on that. You're quite right to also suggest we're making a start in the background. And actually, I can quite neatly link to the previous speaker's question to say, you know, we know some of our criteria is going to be around how we apply carbon measures to our criteria, and therefore what measures we use, whether they're quantifiable or qualifiable. So a slightly roundabout answer may be hopefully the same answer. But yeah, we don't want to leave it so long that we'll be reviewing next year's on the same criteria, but we want to give it an opportunity to come forward. And if I may ask one of the other questions, and I'm looking at you, Jackie, for a steer just in case... Sorry, apologies councillor Porter, I do apologise. But I understand our strategic review is likely to go through the policy committees, and therefore will be considered.
Thank you very much indeed. There was a question about whether the amount of community grant was sufficient. Is that something that also goes through the overall strategic review of SIL?
Yes, I think it's... The conversation is actually about how. In fact, I give credit to the previous administration, because we argued for this very clearly at the time, of having a quarter million over three years. But actually, in the end, we've ended up spending much more than that, and it proves to be a very good way of getting SIL spent. Parishes are really good at getting the work done. So it has ended up, we top the fund up as we need to, and that's why we decided to top it up by that percentage this year. So at the moment, it does seem sufficient.
Thank you very much. I've had advice that the decision that we're taking on SIL is being taken on this paper and not the next one. So the next one sets the budget for the overall project, i.e. how much we're going to spend, and this paper makes the decision to allocate SIL to it. So if you do have concerns about the particular question of allocation of SIL, I realise you've already spoken, but I think it would be fair and appropriate for you to be able to make those comments now.
Thank you, councillor Todd. I much appreciate that. Yes, I wasn't quite sure where I should have placed my comment. And overall, I'd like to say what a fantastic project KGV New Pavilion is as part of our overall support for the health and wellbeing agenda. I'm just questioning, Chair, the level of the district SIL, which is £1.25 million in total, being offered to the KGV project. So that's almost 40% of that total project. Yet the benefit to the wider district is less than that. We know from the paper that 30% of the pavilion usage is outside of the district altogether, and based on everyone active statistics from the recent presentations, we know the sport and leisure park is not reaching out equally to all areas in the district. Closer to home is that we have better usage. So I'm just questioning, how do we therefore justify this level of investment from the district SIL pot to this particular project, no matter how important it is to complete it, when we have other calls on the monies to support district infrastructure projects? So I was just hoping that you could explain to me that balance, please. Thank you.
Councillor Porter, and then I'm sure that councillor Ferguson will want to say a few words as well.
Asha, I'm going to defer to councillor Ferguson, because I think the argument that she's made that justified this in the first place is very strong, and I'd like her to be able to rehearse that.
Thank you, councillor Horrell, for raising this point. When we actually look at the usage of the garrison grounds, the playing fields, and particularly where this pavilion will sit, the data we have shows that 70% of people are actually coming from the Winchester district. So people are coming and using the site. We have teams from Littleton, the Worthies, Otterbourne, Kingsworthy, Compton, Bishopswaltham and Sutton Scottney. We know it's the home of the Winchester City Flyers. And we also know that they're one of the largest female grassroots football clubs in the UK. They have 22 youth teams drawn from across the district and Hampshire, the wider Hampshire. They have three senior teams, and they have more than 480 girls and lady registered players. So even though this facility may sit in the town, it's very much a much wider district facility. In looking at the proportion of costs that are coming from the two different SIL pots, and again, I may have to defer back to councillor Porter or to Dornady on this, we looked at the relative amount of money that hasn't already been allocated. And even though, when we look at the change in percentages that's occurred, which we can see in sections 2.6, then to 2.8, the town is still giving a considerable percentage of the remaining unallocated funds it has. In fact, with the allocation of these funds in the town SIL pot, there would literally be a few hundreds of thousands left unallocated. Whereas in the district SIL pot, even though I accept that there are additional calls on that money, there's lots we want to do, there would be a substantial amount remaining for those other projects, many of which are not coming forward at this period. And we do know we will get additional SIL funds, particularly into that district pot, as we move forward. But councillor Porter may want to add something.
I think you've described the situation perfectly. I think we know that there are some projects that actually speak for the whole district, and we are very keen to encourage activity, particularly amongst women. And this is an ideal opportunity to show our real commitment to it.
The only thing I wanted to add was, again, we point out in section 11.1 that under the playing fields strategy, which was done in 2018, we particularly identified this site as somewhere that needed additional facilities, ones that are brought up to the Football Federation standards. And if you saw the press release recently by the Winchester City Flyers, they're saying on the back of the Lionesses' magnificent success in the European Cup that they expect an expansion, particularly of female football. And we know that the facilities we currently have just aren't good enough. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. Thank you councillor Horrell for your questions, and thank you also to councillor Ferguson and councillor Porter for those very helpful answers, which I think will have provided a lot of reassurance to those present. The next part of the discussion is any questions from Cabinet about this particular paper? And I can see that councillor Power wishes to ask a question.
Thank you, Leader. Very briefly, I'm on page 39 of the papers before us. The open space improvements with the housing scheme at Winall Flats. Will those be open to the residents of a locality as a whole, rather than just those of the flats?
So even though that open space is going to obviously be located in the flats, and there are some important things that will be improved. For example, there'll be an opportunity for some community growing beds, et cetera, some more seating. That flat is... That development isn't in any way gated? So people can come in and out and use those facilities, as they do currently, to walk their dogs around the flats?
Any other questions that people wish to... Oh, councillor Becker.
Sorry, got to get in the first meeting. We have an unallocated sum of £23,548 this year. Do we have a plan to ensure that that is spent, that we don't continue to have an underspend, that we make sure that everything is allocated, particularly given that we're going to be increasing the amount available for...
I think this is the first year we've actually had an underspend. Every other year we've had far more, projects worth far more than the money we've had available. So yes, I think this year we were fairly cautious that everything was kept very tight to the criteria. But I think it was a very unusual situation to have that underspend, and I doubt whether it will happen in future.
Councillor Porter.
Thank you. I think as well, several of the villages particularly who have projects that were ongoing and had they got money during Covid, didn't feel they could take on another project at this point until the other ones were finished. And so we were very keen to support them to make sure they did that. But certainly, we will continue to advertise the scheme, and it's very, very encouraging how many parishes take it up and use the money wisely.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from Cabinet? Bait, any comments or against the paper we have in front of us? Councillor Ferguson.
Just really to say that I'm very much looking forward to the strategic review of SIL funds, and notwithstanding waiting for details from government. I think adding in the quantitative carbon measures will be an important step, if that's possible. And actually looking at how we utilise SIL funds to benefit the widest number of groups across the widest area of the district, you know, will be something that we currently strive for, but should be something we look at very closely when we do that review.
Just like I say, that it does, it has... A little bit looking at the numbers of different parishes that have applied this time, does feel that certain ones know how to work the system. And so we're very keen to make sure that all growing communities benefit from this, not just a few. And that would be, that's the useful reminder that we need to make sure that's advertised really well. And I'm intending actually to go and explain to people, I have recently only done it to one particular parish, to explain to their parish council exactly what this means and how it can work for them. Because they receive 15% of the SIL automatically into their accounts, but I'm making it very clear to them that they also have a responsibility to think about the rest of that money that could come to their communities.
Councillor Power.
Thank you, Leader. I'm also very keen that when we look at the allocation of our SIL funds, that we recognise the importance of market towns. They do in fact provide facilities for the villages that surround them as well. And I think when we do that review, we should ensure that we reflect that in any changes to policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from fellow Cabinet members? Councillor Gordon Smith.
Well, I'm quite concerned. We've seen how the new pavilion has had a problem with being seriously under budget when it comes to the contract, despite presumably the best cost estimates. I'm just wondering whether we're going to end up with the same thing with some of these other projects, and how closely monitored, how we might solve the problems when they have a huge shortfall as well.
In fact, one of them is an extension of money. But it's also partly matched by the Football Foundation, that extension of money, one of the smaller projects. Because they are managed by the parishes, if they... That's why we're acknowledging the difficulty in this paper of the rocketing, I'd say, inflation costs on building. And they're often being hampered by the timing and the delivery of it as well. So that's one of the challenges, and that's why we want to acknowledge it in this paper. And that's why if there was a slight underspend, we know what we can spend it on. I think it's very true, and we know it for every single project, don't we, that's being done of any value, whether it's in your own home or right up to the big projects like the pavilion. It's a really huge worry.
Thank you, councillor Porter. I don't think there are any other Cabinet members who wish to speak. Councillor Porter, do you have any sort of final comments that you would like to make above and beyond those you've made already?
No, I don't think so. It does actually, in the paper, Corin has very clearly stated the current position as we are. And the money that comes in, this year's money, has been somewhat less because of the phosphates issue. We've got to, once that's sorted out, we'll be back on track, I expect. But it is a very... It's a wonderful opportunity to use practical money that's come in through development for our communities. And I think we just make sure we make the absolute best of that money.
Thank you, councillor Porter. And I think we've had a proper discussion about the particular uses of money that we're authorising in this paper today, and I think that's been very productive. We've scrutinised some of the issues that have come up, and I appreciate the chance for that discussion. Rightly, I think there's a lot of interest in the strategic review that we're looking at in terms of SIL. I share councillor Porter's view that, and I think councillor Ferguson's view as well, that it's probably a bit like the Fair Funding Review. I don't think we should wait for a government review to happen, because quite often these things get announced with a flourish and then never do. And so it's right that we work through and work out what we as members from across the council think should be happening with SIL and how we can make best use of it. But I think what has come through is that we have benefited from a kind of community-led bottom-up approach on this proportion of the funding that's in front of us, with a good set of projects in front of us. We have a set of recommendations that we are being asked to approve, approving the ongoing spending programme, authorising the strategic director with responsibility for SIL to consider the inflationary impact on projects originally, well, already approved, and to recommend any adjustments to the cabinet member. In line with those recommendations, delegating authority to the cabinet member for place and local plan to approve supplementary capital estimates and expenditure via a decision day to any existing project for which additional funding is required due to inflation, or provided that doesn't exceed £500,000. So we have a measure in place to address the inflation issue. Then being asked to approve £226,452 towards the list of projects that we have in front of us. Similarly, the capital budget and expenditure for the open space improvements of KGV, and similarly, the additional budgets for the KGV pavilion project. And finally, a reallocation, sorry, two more for approval, reallocation of funds for the Winchester City Football Club project, which had been previously approved in 2020. Football Club project, which had been previously approved in twenty-twenty-one, and an allocation of three hundred thousand pounds for a further round of community bids in twenty-three, twenty-four. So those are the recommendations we have in front of us. Cabinet? Oh?
Just so it goes on your minutes, I'd just like to amend recommendation five to read twenty-second of September twenty-twenty-two in the date.
Which we mentioned earlier, that needs to be...
So Cabinet, subject to a drafting amendment to recommendation five to replace the fifteenth of September to the twenty-second of September, although if I was a pedant, I would point out that the meeting on the twenty-second of December is actually an adjournment of a meeting which was officially dated on the fifteenth of September. But luckily, I'm not a pedant. So we will take that adjustment. But, to be fair, the approval will be on the twenty-second. Subject to that amendment, Cabinet, are you agreed with the recommendations you have in front of you today? Thank you very much indeed. And thank you all who participated in the discussion and for the comments that helped us through that particular paper. The next item on the agenda is item nine, which is the KGV New Build Pavilion, a request for additional budget, CAB thirty-three sixty-three. And councillor Ferguson, could you please introduce this paper?
Thank you, Leader. And hopefully, it will be slightly briefer, because I have already said some of what I was going to say. In March last year, the Cabinet agreed the funding for the new sports pavilion at King's Chars, the fifth playing fields, which is next, as we know, to the Winchester Sports and Leisure Park, University of Winchester Barren Sports Stadium. At the time, the Cabinet agreed that the pavilion was much needed, as it would replace two outdated, underused and inaccessible pavilions with a single, larger, accessible, more sustainable, more modern facility. This is in order to support the continued development of grassroots football in Winchester and the wider district. And again, I've already mentioned the scale and the size of the women's club, the Winchester City Flyers. Many clubs which play regularly on the grounds require better facilities than what we currently have. In fact, one of the old pavilions has already been decommissioned. The new pavilion, with its enhanced facilities, including monied and accessible changing facilities for a number of teams, and a sizable club room, would be both well-used and in demand by a range of teams. It would also be well-used by the community, as the club room could also be used independently for community and social events and activities at other times, and provide a much-needed additional local facility for residents. The purpose of the report today is to request an additional capital spend of a million pounds following procurement of the main contract associated with the delivery of the proposed pavilion. This project has been in consideration for a number of years. And if we agree this additional sum, then we can get the pavilion underway, and the project can become a reality. It's important to point out, as the paper does, this increase in cost is almost entirely down to cost of living, sorry, cost of inflationary increases in terms of materials and resources. These are attributed to the rapidly rising costs and the impact of inflationary pressures, which has been identified as a factor by a number of those who tended for the project. In fact, all of those who tended for the project came in above the budget we were expecting, and each of their tenders identified that the rising cost of materials and labour were a factor. This suggests that the cost increases seen here are indicative, possibly representative of the cost pressures we may see on other projects. There is a lot of detail in the paper which sets out how the project will now be funded. But I hope that the Cabinet will agree it is the right thing to do, to approve this additional spending and the other recommendations made in the paper, so we can get this pavilion underway, and we can get the project off the ground. This will help to secure both girls' football and youth' football and women's football in our district, which is something we can be really proud of, as we probably have one of the best teams in the country at the level they play at, notwithstanding the Lionesses. Mr Todd, I don't know whether you'd like to say anything in addition, by way of introduction?
Thank you, councillor Ferguson. I think the only thing I would add is construction costs are intended to increase over the next five years. The RICS's Building Cost Information Centre forecasts inflation cost over the next five years, so waiting being considered.
Thank you, Mr Todd. Strange to say that, but anyway. Councillor Horrell, I believe you have questions or comments to make on this paper as well?
Chair, thank you for allowing me to address the meeting again this afternoon. What a fantastic project to rebuild a new pavilion as part of our overall support for our health and wellbeing agenda alongside our great new sport and leisure park. Strategically, I support the intent wholeheartedly. My questions today relate to some of the specifics of the proposed approach. This is an enormous budget, and although I understand the current facilities are definitely not fit for purpose, does the project have to run to three-point-three million? Have we looked at other options? If so, what were they? They're not clear in the paper as to exactly what they were, and why have we rejected them? Please, can we have a parallel work stream to raise additional grants for the pavilion? I appreciate we don't want to stop the work until we find additional funds, but there are tens of organisations supporting this type of activity across the country. Can we not add a recommendation to pursue additional funding as we progress, and hopefully add to the total pot for the fund? Chair, you've already heard my comments regarding the district SIL amount, and I'm grateful to the Cabinet members for their comments and clarification on that earlier. Finally, Chair, I have a question about the governance for the pavilion, given the proposed mixed usage, and in particular, the community and social representation. I see this issue left hanging in the current paper. How do we secure open access for the pavilion, given the levels of vandalism we have experienced in the past? I appreciate this as a matter of detail, but as such a huge price tag, we need to ensure council resources are used wisely and looked after well. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Horrell, for raising those points. Councillor Ferguson?
Thank you, and thank you, councillor Horrell. If we can take them in order, I may ask, if I can ask you, Mr Todd, to cover the first question, which was what other alternatives would we look at, what other options, please?
In terms of the pavilion construction itself, it has been covered in previous papers, but the pavilion meets the needs of the Football Foundation and the Cricket Board as well, given the Football Foundation are a large contributor of grant funding, which leads on to what other grants we've sought as well. So I believe the Natural Environment Team have approached a number of organisations for grant funding. The Football Foundation, as I mentioned, given the largest funding they have to any of the projects they're currently working on.
Sorry. Thank you, Graham. I think councillor Horrell was actually asking, though, she was saying, you know, did it have to cost three-point-three million? Had we looked at other alternatives? And I think you touched on that earlier, where the concern is if we went back for a redesign, or perhaps something smaller, we may find that doesn't meet Football Foundation criterias, we may lose that element of the grant. Equally, we may find that by the time we come back again with something smaller, because costs have continued to rise, we could be paying three-point-three million or maybe more for something less than what we're currently getting. Is there anything you want to add, Graham?
It is covered in the paper. So we had considered redesigning the scheme to maybe reducing the size of it. But the cost of redesign would mean planning application again, and also additional fees and design fees. And as we mentioned, construction costs are only going to inflate. As I mentioned, it meets the needs of the Football Foundation and the Cricket Board as well.
Thank you, Mr Todd. And then the third question was around governance for the pavilion, and I'm hoping, Miss Ada, you can help us with that. The concern was, how do we account for the fact there could be resident units? How do we, how will we allow for open access, potentially?
Thank you. I don't have a specific answer, unfortunately. Graham's waving at me, maybe he does. I'll pass to Graham, if I may. Thank you.
It'll be managed as it is, other pavilions we have. So we've got a similar pavilion, Chilkam. It's bookable through the Environment Team. They'll open that up and...
If I can expand on that, we are also setting up a community group, including users and local community representatives, to take part in the governance of the pavilion and make sure that it is being, it is open to all, readily accessible. So we will have external input into this. It isn't entirely going to be managed within the council.
So I think councillor Horrell, there's a difference between the booking system, which is the one we have and that works well, and actually making sure that the community gets access. And the pavilion, this new facility, which will be very impressive, gets well-used and maximally used for the greatest benefit.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ferguson. Cabinet, do any other Cabinet members have questions about the pavilion and this paper? Oh, councillor Ferguson, do you have a question for yourself about this that you'd like to ask?
So it was really just a point to draw out in the meeting. I do know that even when we approve this budget, Graham, that we will also be looking at the costs and still seeking to see if there are any cost savings. It does say that in the paper, but I wondered if you could just reiterate it here. Thank you.
So we're still going through a live tender process at the moment. Once we're close to appointing a contractor, we'll seek any value engineering items they may have of a minor nature, which hopefully would provide some cost saving.
Thank you very much indeed. If there are no comments from Cabinet, are there any points of debate? Councillor Thompson?
Thank you, Leader. I am very happy to support this paper and all its recommendations. This is a very significant and important project for the city council. Not only will the new pavilion enhance what we have to offer in the sport and leisure park, but it also, as we've heard, comes with significant benefits to the community, both locally and across the district. In recent months, we've all witnessed such a huge rise in the cost of building materials and associated labour costs. And this has really affected all the tenders that we are seeing coming in now. They are all substantially higher than our original budget. And there is little doubt that this would not, this will not be the only case where we do have to look carefully at whether we can afford to carry on with a project or not. But I think, as has been pointed out, this is, this project in particular, it is really vital for our community. We know that the High Cliff community in the past has asked for community facilities, and this does offer them that. It also ensures that we have a great offer for girls' and women's sport. We all know that girls drop out of sport in their teenage years, and I think, you know, what happened with the success of the Lionesses in the summer will really help to boost girls' participation, not only in football but in other sports. And so I think it's absolutely crucial that as a city council, we are offering facilities for those women and girls to actually participate in sport and contribute to their health and wellbeing in their lives. So very happy to support this paper. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Thompson. Councillor Porter?
Thank you. And I think partly it sort of ties up with what councillor Thompson's just said. There's been quite a lot of research about why women give up sport and young women give up sport, and actually changing facilities, and the whole process of getting ready to play is one of the key parts of that. And it's really important that we show and lead the way in what those facilities can look like. And I also think it's a great opportunity, I know we've talked about the SIL before, but it's a great opportunity to put chunks of money into really valuable facilities for the whole community, whether it be for male or female, any other group that we want to help to actually achieve something, to live well in this area, in the district. I think it's an opportunity for us to think about spending that money wisely in small chunks, as we've just described earlier, but also in bigger chunks, so that we really get the facilities that are up to the standard that we'd want to see for our own communities. So I congratulate councillor Ferguson, got it this far.
Thank you, councillor Porter. Councillor Ernie?
Thank you. I'd like to support what's already been said. Clearly, this will be an extremely valuable facility for the district as a whole. And I think when we look at the process that's been involved, it's important to recognise that this is a highly constrained site. It was quite difficult designing a building that would fit within the area available at the same time as providing the facilities that were required, and indeed, the facilities that are needed. A significant number of companies did tender for this. We clearly do have a market price for this development, and the increase is very much in line with what I'm hearing other organisations are seeing with their capital projects coming forward. Increases in energy costs will continue to impact on the cost of materials such as cement and steel into the foreseeable future, in line with what Graham said about the predictions. And future labour costs also are likely to continue to rise. All the while we delay, the existing facilities are getting worse and worse. And frankly, as has been mentioned, women and girls are quite easily put off sport, and the facilities we have are certainly enough to do that on their own. I think it's really important that we progress this as soon as we can, rather than dither about and delay, waiting for some rabbit to come out of a hat. So very supportive of this, and really pleased that we've been able to bring it forward today, so that we can move on with the project.
Thank you very much indeed, councillor Ernie, and thank you for your earlier work on the development of this project as well, which is much appreciated. Councillor Ferguson, do you have any final comments?
Yes, Leader, and I'll be brief. I'd just like to thank Mr Todd and colleagues who've helped bring this to this stage, and for the additional work you've done as we've gone through the procurement process and you'll continue to do. Just two other points, really just to emphasise, this is going to be a sustainable facility too. It has those additional green measures, which will mean it will produce very little carbon, if any, and also with rising energy costs, it hopefully won't hit us too hard with needs for heating. The other thing to point out, of course, is it also is accessible, which is very, very important in terms of our inclusion and equality. We don't just want girls and women to feel comfortable changing, we want people of all abilities to have the opportunity to both take part in sport and also to be comfortable watching sports. and also to be comfortable watching sports. When we look at the details of the consultation, a lot of people said that they use the pavilion to go to the loo. We shouldn't just think about the players. We should think about all their families and all their supporters who are actually watching the matches too. So thank you, colleagues, for your support on this. And I'm looking forward to getting the project underway.
Thank you, councillor Ferguson. And I can only echo all the other comments that have been made about firstly, the importance of this project and the need to get on with it. We are going to face financial challenges as we go ahead. You know, this is not the first, the only project that will be affected by construction costs. And there will be some hard and difficult decisions down the road that we will need to make as a result. But the right decision in this case is that we go ahead. You know, this is a project that I'm very, a choice that I'm very happy for us to make as a cabinet. I think the case has been put forward excellently by councillor Ferguson and by Mr Todd. And the other comments and colleagues have also been very welcome. So personally, I also strongly support the recommendations that we have in front of us today. And I would like to remind Cabinet what those recommendations are. First of all, because we are approving an additional capital budget of £1 million, that is not something that we can decide on our own. So the first thing we need to agree as a cabinet is that we will be recommending that additional budget to full council to enable the proposed build of the pavilion and increasing the budget to 3.3 million pounds. So first of all, can I just take agreement on that particular decision?
Great.
Thank you very much. The second thing, the second areas relate to areas that are within our control, which are the question of how the expenditure should be done, subject to approval of the council's revised budget. So the first item is to approve the expenditure of up to 3.3 million pounds under Financial Procedure Rule 7.4, subject to the council's approval, full council's approval of the revised budget. Secondly, to delegate the authority to undertake the value engineering that councillor Ferguson referred to, to ensure that the pavilion is built within the 3.3 million budget. But as necessary, delegate authority to the Strategic Director for Services to undertake a new procurement exercise, should that be needed. Delegate the authority to the Strategic Director for Services to appoint the relevant contractors and to negotiate and agree contractual heads of terms with the contract appointment. And delegate authority to the service lead legal to prepare and enter into all relevant agreements, negotiate the contractual agreements and see them to completion to enable the proposed new build KGV pavilion. So Cabinet, do you agree with those recommendations? And then the last item, I would ask you to note that there will be a separate meeting this evening at 30 to discuss the approval of town SIL funding. And all our decisions are also dependent on that approval going ahead. But I'd ask you to just note that there's no decision required from us on that particular point. Good. Thank you. On to the next item of business, which is the Quarter One Finance and Performance Monitoring Report. Now, this is a long and detailed paper, and I'm not proposing to go through it in great depth, partly because, and I'd like to thank councillor Horrell, who is here today. We have a performance panel whose job is to do just that. And also, as you know, Cabinet, we have also had the opportunity to talk directly with the officers concerned about the detailed points raised within this paper. The paper is in the usual four sections. First of all, progress on our strategic priorities. And there is encouraging progress highlighted there. It is particularly timely that the new energy efficiency works at the council offices have been implemented and completed in quarter one, saving potentially or saving over 160,000 kilowatt-hours of energy. It is similarly useful at a time of high energy prices to see the progress in our solar energy generation, which has been a big priority for this administration. The paper also outlines the work that was being done in the first quarter by teams across the council to support Ukrainian refugees and families and their hosts in our district and right across the district. It highlighted the high level of membership and usage of the sport and leisure park, the 129 new homes under construction in Wynnall and Whiteley, the approval of the Green Economic Development Strategy, and the successful renewal programme for our garden waste service. And the progress being made at the time on the local plan, for which as part of our journey towards the Reg 18 consultation was published earlier today, or even late last night, I think. So a lot of good progress on our strategic priorities. The next section is the financial update, which highlights the financial view on June 30, with particular focus on the challenges we face from increased utility costs. This is a situation that has continued to develop. And as you may have seen in your emails this morning, we will be having an extra cabinet meeting on November 5, where we will discuss a revised medium-term financial strategy and outlook to reflect the impact that extra inflation and energy costs have had upon the city council and the choices that may need to be made arising from that. Then we have the section which goes through the KPIs in detail. And I'd like to thank officers for this very helpful new formula, which shows progress on a quarterly, six-monthly, annual and biennial, sort of well-organised and easy-to-understand basis, which is much appreciated. And finally, the paper outlines the good progress being made on all of our main projects, the Bar End Depot, carbon neutrality, central Winchester regeneration, the local plan, the new homes programme and the movement strategy. And finally, for those of you who read the papers in detail, there is a very useful minute from the performance panel, which shows how the paper has been gone through in great detail by that group. I appreciate the work and discussion that members and officers put into that meeting. But there were no particular members, no particular items arising for Cabinet to address. However, I know that councillor Horrell also wishes to speak to this paper. So councillor Horrell, thank you for your work at the performance panel, going through this paper in detail. If you have any comments or questions that you'd like to make, then they would be very welcome.
Chair, thank you. And additionally, may I say thank you to the officers who support us in the process of that review, which, as you know, then goes, the panel review that goes to scrutiny. Members of Cabinet were at the scrutiny committee when this was reviewed further. And we had a number of questions answered. We still have a number outstanding. But as you know, we will follow up on those as part of the next quarterly review. Chair, the reason for my comment is that at the panel, there was some concern expressed right across all panel members about the risk to the council budget because of the various movements in terms of inflation, increasing costs of labour, materials, et cetera. And that we needed to pay particular attention to that. And in fact, today's agenda has really highlighted that, where you've announced the cost of living intervention. We've talked extensively about the wonderful project of the KGV pavilion, but the costs that you're having to deal with incrementally for that. And therefore, the impact that that project is demonstrating to all of us, but in fact, may well apply to many other activities that we are planned to move forward on. So Chair, you mentioned potentially an extra meeting to discuss budgets. And if that is correct, then I think that will be very welcomed, because I think the panel and indeed scrutiny were expressing some concern that although we have reserves put aside, given some of the potential costs, that we do pay sufficient attention to those various movements and that we can therefore support as much of our activity as we plan to do and not be impacted by the various budget movements. And also to ensure that where best we can, we can give support to our residents. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Horrell. And thank you for reinforcing, shall we say, the rightness of the decision. I've been told, I may not have been entirely clear how I set the date last time. It is November 15, 15. NATO terminology. And the points that were raised by the panel, as well as other information that is being looked at, will, the intention is that we do address those at that meeting. I know also you raised the issue about risk registers. And I know that audit and governance are very interested in taking a close look at those as well, as indeed are cabinet members in the areas that affect them. We have not lived in such uncertain financial times for many years. Some of us may have memories, most of us may have memories of those inflationary days in the 70s and 80s and some of the, but not all of us. Yes, I apologise to anybody who wasn't around at the time. But some of us do have memories of those times. And they will be challenging. And it will force new decisions upon us. And we will be looking very closely at all the council's activities and coming back with a set of choices that we need to make in order to ensure that we have a sound medium-term financial strategy, as well as making sure that we are well-placed in terms of the shorter-term challenges and financial challenges that we face. Mr Botham, I don't know if you want to add anything to that, since I know that you and your team are doing the heavy lifting in terms of supporting Cabinet with the journey towards that November 15 meeting.
Thank you, councillor Todd. I can confirm obviously that the team work actively every day on this subject. And the position changes every day. We included a forecast position in this report, said head of this report. That has changed several times since this report was actually published. So members will be aware, there were some inflation announcements from the Bank of England around the time. And these forecasts are based on that. They were superseded by experts in the field that were contemplating more significant rises in the new year. The latest government announcements actually are likely to address that and may even take it below the forecasting that were included in this report. So that just shows how this changes as we move forward. Delaying bringing forward the medium-term strategy to the meeting in November does allow us time to see the impact of any announcements the government makes tomorrow in the proposed mini-budget, which we wouldn't be able to do if we brought it forward to the October meeting of Cabinet. So that's the reason for that we're recommending that, allowing that time to bring forward a more complete paper.
Thank you very much indeed. And thank you for that reassurance. As you say, we live in times where, in the past, you know, inflation assumptions, to take a very obvious example, have not moved dramatically between one meeting and the next. But we now live in a period where estimates of inflation, the interest rates that we're likely to need to cover, the rules that relate to government finance, the support that we're likely to get from the government are all in flux. And please communicate to your colleagues how much we appreciate the work that they're doing in order to ensure that we'll be able to have a soundly-based and productive, although maybe not easy, conversation when we get to the November meeting. Colleagues, are there any other questions on this report from other members of Cabinet? I would hope that you've all read it in detail and discussed it where needed with the relevant officers. I will resist the temptation to start asking you questions on your particular sections of the report. Is there any debate that you would like to make or any comments you'd like to make on the overall paper?
We strive to improve. We just look at this performance panel and the...
I think that is a very important point that you make there, councillor Porter. We can never afford to stand still. We can never afford to be complacent about the challenges we face. The demands are ever greater. The challenges keep coming thick and fast. But the work that goes into preparation of this paper and the information it provides is enormous. But it is also very useful and I think provides a very useful management tool base for ourselves and for the directors to be able to assess the progress of the council as a whole and...
Not just a paper exercise.
It is absolutely not just a paper exercise and shouldn't be treated as such. Chief Executive, do you have any comments on the paper that you would like to make?
Thank you, Leader. I think we face unprecedented challenges, public sector, between ourselves and our partners at this time. I think that between us, we are trying to do our very best to serve our communities. But there are times when we need to make difficult decisions about slowing something down or prioritising another key issue. And the cost of living announcement tonight is an example of that. But I know I speak for the officer team, when we value the support, but also the challenge from members to make sure that we continually all face in the right direction to deliver the very best services to our communities.
Thank you very much indeed, Chief Executive. So Cabinet, we are being asked to... We are being asked to note the progress achieved during quarter one and endorse its content. Are we all agreed that we will do that? Thank you very much indeed. And we now move to the last item on the agenda, which is the forward plan for August. Does anybody have any... Sorry. Sorry, I have a piece of paper here that says August, but... Yes. It's been a strange time, hasn't it? You know, it's... I think it's also aging. Christmas seems to come round faster every year. But anyway. The Forward Plan for Key Decisions for October 2022. Are there any questions, comments or changes that people wish to see to it? Otherwise, I would ask you to note Forward Plan.
Leader, should we note the...
Thank you for that clarification, councillor Power. Yes, that is a useful thing, a useful correction. Councillor Ferguson, this is turning into quite a paper.
I also think that we should note for anyone listening that some of these papers are coming to the Cabinet Committee for Housing and for Cabinet, people are interested in some of those specific papers.
That is a very fair point. This Forward Plan doesn't just cover the papers that will be coming to Cabinet. It covers the papers that are going to decision days, where individual cabinet members make decisions on particular issues. And it covers cabinet subcommittees, such as the Cabinet Housing Subcommittee. So for those who are interested in the intricacies of local government governance, did I miss one? Sorry.
I would hate to correct you, but it's a cabinet committee. It's not a subcommittee of Cabinet.
Thank you for that clarification. For those listening, this is an absolute black belt in the structure of local government that you're having a chance to pick up here. Thank you for the clarification. Anyway, we have this... Councillor Porter, this was meant to be, I should have just said, look, we'll note it and move on.
I'm sorry. I've just been reminded by that key decisions that a review of Hackney carriage fares is actually undergoing and it's actually in process now. So that date of October 22 is still valid, but it's just bringing that to everybody. Sorry.
Thank you very much indeed, councillor Porter. I think we have mined this paper for everything it will yield. So colleagues, are you happy to note this paper, subject to the correction that councillor Power asked for? Thank you very much indeed. And I believe that brings us to the end of the meeting. Thank you to all the officers who... Thank you to all the officers who have attended today and for the input you made. Thank you, Cabinet colleagues. I declare the meeting closed.